We're good. All right. All right. So, welcome to our November work session. Today is Thursday, November 4th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. We just have two items on our workshop agenda. Thank you all for being here. Just a note that our workshops do not have a public forum agenda item, but at our next board meeting on November 18th, if the public wishes to speak, there will be a spot on the agenda for them. So, and I'll just turn it over to Mr. Spence, and you can kind of introduce our first agenda item.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight for our work session. You know, we worked quite hard last Thursday on a lot of pretty heavy lifting in terms of some of our agenda items and our board professional development. So, I thank you for that time. And as we move into this week, our regularly scheduled board work session that we do on the first meeting of the month, kind of two of our topics that we've been talking about is, one, being a staff spotlight, being able to learn some more about some of the work that our staff does that may not always be front page news when it comes to our teaching learning in our schools, but it's very, very important to what we do every day, as well as working through some of the professional learning that we've talked about focusing on this fall. So, what I'd like to do first is just to start with our staff spotlight. We have our technology integration coaches here and Clint Link, our Director of Innovation and Career Pathways, who's helping us to facilitate that. And Clint, I would start with you and just being able to introduce who of your team is here tonight and then what how the staff spotlight has worked really for you all. Just really, it's a five to minute review of what you do to support your building, support your colleagues. And then if the board has any questions for you, you can respond as you're able. But it really is just a chance for us to say, "Thank you for the work we're doing to support your colleagues, to support our kids and your buildings, and for us to learn a little bit more about what you do." So, thanks for being here, Clint. I'll let you introduce who is with us tonight, and then they can share a little bit about what they do with our staff and kids.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I will just do a quick history here of where we came up with our tech instructional coaches, and then I'll introduce our three that are, I think, for showing up tonight and being a part of this. And then I will let you guys ask them questions because we prepared nothing. I want you to ask us questions of what you think about it. But here's the history. My tech integration position was created in 2016, and we explored after that one year, thinking that we were maybe going to have an elementary version of me and then a high school version of me through exploration of other programs at other schools. Having teachers available in each building was kind of a priority of ours. And also, to save an FTE position, we were able to offer stipends to multiple teachers across the entire district who can facilitate the just-in-time type of professional development, but also the assistance that our staff needed as we went to the one-to-one with our Chromebooks initiative. So, in 2017 is when we implemented our tech instructional coaches. We divvied up evenly across by student ratio across our district. We have three at the junior senior high. We have one at the central building. We have two at Hartley, and we have three at WIS. And the purpose for the three at WS is John wanted to have extra overloads. And so, he, out of his budget, ended up paying for a third tick, as we call them, in his billing. So, we have a grand total of nine across the district. We've had a little fluctuation over that period of time, but you're looking at three of the originals here from the start, and Mary Gilson, who is a Spanish teacher out at the junior senior high, Andrew Hopkins, who is a geography teacher, and Dan Sharpstein, who is a world history teacher, all at the high school. So, this is our team at the junior senior high. And so, you got a little bit of history. I coordinate with them and work with them, I'd say, about every six weeks throughout the school year. It's a nice chance for our cross-building connections that we have with each other. This group is a group that you look at for our professional development when it comes to our tech integration. However, we're trying to shift the position to be more of an instructional leader and in the student-centered concepts. And so, that's our goal this year, is to kind of start thinking of ways that not only we emphasize technology, but we're how we use that with the student at the center and move from a traditional teaching model of a teacher-centric mindset then. So, I'll stop talking, and I'll let you guys ask us questions. These are really our teacher leaders. I should probably mention the other ones. Emily Schultz at Hartley Elementary with Kelly Gardner. We have Jenna Shane Rock at the ALC. And then we have Savannah Walker, who's a fourth grade teacher at WIS. Joey Wallenberg, who's our media specialist there, and Ria O'Brien is a fifth grade teacher. So, that's our team that we have across this. All right, I'm done talking. You guys go.
Thanks. Well, thanks. And thanks for being here. And so, Dan, Mary, Andrew, could you just give the board a little bit of what would be a question you might feel in a given day or week from one of your colleagues that you help support?
Like a lot of us, problem solving. You know, they describe what they want to do in the classroom, and then we work with them to get to that point. It might be using different apps or technology resources that we already have available or working, you know, even as simple as like a Google Doc to get something formatted right. So, it really, you know, ranges from pretty simplistic to sometimes a little bit more advanced things. And that's kind of what I see a role, role is a lot of times, is not only support the staff, but really show them how to solve the problems down the road as well. So, that's, that's kind of the big part of it, I'd say.
Yep. And I can add to that as it's, you know, since COVID hit, it kind of morphed into that, "How do we teach online?" role. And so, we were doing a lot of on hands-on at the point of teaching, of teaching, teaching people how to teach online. And with that, this year, it's kind of morphed into, "How do we make things more efficient for everyone?" No one's job got easier this year. In fact, I would say that everyone's job got harder. It didn't matter if you were an administrator or a teacher. It really morphed into, "How do we make our jobs more efficient?" And so, that's what I'm focusing on right now.
Give me the Mary.
It's been a while since I've been in one of these Google meets, so I'm not used to it anymore. But I would agree with my colleagues there, and the ideal question that we'd get is like, "How can I take this sort of activity and make it better by using technology?" And just brainstorming with staff members about how they can improve their lessons. I would say one, or some types of questions that we sometimes get that probably isn't the best would be like, "My board isn't working. How do I fix it?" Or, "My sound isn't working. How do I fix it?" So, while those are technology questions, those are more for Brian Cordam and Carrie Prebe. So, I think sometimes staff members might be a little bit confused about like, "How we're supposed to help them improve their lessons to include technology versus, "my computer's not working. I need this problem to be fixed."
And just to add on to that, I'd say a lot of it is just keeping the pulse on like, "What works for students and what doesn't work for students?" Because we have, just in the high school, you know, three different perspectives between me, Andrew, and Mary. And then we're able to discuss like, "This is work for my class. This isn't working for my class." And then we can kind of narrow down what resources are best used for the school district in general, so we're not kind of not having a lot of waste.
And I'll add a little more to it, too. These people end up being our guinea pigs a lot of times when we're trying and piloting new programs or hardware. Even if we're looking at new pedagogical strategies, there are willing and growth mindset of teachers typically. And so, we'll send them to professional development because they want or desire it. And then they'll try to implement those strategies into their rooms, too. So, they do go beyond just helping people make their lessons a little bit better. They better themselves, too.
So, do you guys have a favorite platform that you like to work with or one that you don't like to work with in particular?
I'm a big fan of Schoology. It kind of all starts from there. That's my foundation. I'd say when it comes to, comes to the classroom and just the ease and organizational piece is really the big part. But being able to implement other, you know, resources within that is kind of the biggest benefit. So, it's not like you're bouncing around to 15 different things. You can kind of have it all self-contained into one area. So, if you use an EdPuzzle or Flipgrid or, you know, all the different ones that are available out there, a lot of times you can attach them within that program. And then, once again, it's not jumping around and confusing the students where you can have your starting point, and then from there you can expand.
I would totally agree with that. I think Schoology is the MVP that we have and definitely very great that we had it and had it a while before the pandemic hit. I would say that I also really appreciated having EdPuzzle, especially last year, with being able to post videos, embed questions into an EdPuzzle activity. And then you can also see like, how many times a student view a video, like which segments they viewed multiple times. So, I liked EdPuzzle. The one that I've been using, too, is called Paradek. And it takes like a presentation, and you can add interactive questions into it. And I've been using that one a lot, and it saves the students' responses. I can see the students' responses as they're working on it. And I've just tailored a lot of my lessons to be inclusive of EdPuzzle activities, too. So, that one's one of my favorites currently.
Yep. And I can add to that. Schoology, obviously, is that at the heart of everything we do as teachers. You know, every day, we're updating our Schoology pages and our calendars up on our Schoology page. And that's really, students know that that's the go-to for anything that happens in class. And students should know that for anything that happens with grades, that's Infinite Campus. And that's the portal that is incredibly valuable as well. One thing that I'm, that I'm doing, kind of focusing on this year is a lot of my formative assessments, either my like daily checkups or my small quizzes. I've been using a lot of Google Forms for those because Google Forms has a feature that allows me to lock down their Chromebooks, so they can't take screenshots, they can't exit. And if they do exit the quiz, it sends me an email of the timestamp of when they do. So, it's a really handy tool for that test security purposes.
And I'll, before we ask another question, this is Lulines with a lot what Dr. Miller's doing at the high school, too. He's really trying to work on the assessment piece. And you heard Andrew talk about a formative assessment. Mary just talked about her formative assessments with using Paradek and EdPuzzle. And this is just a key part of, of understanding as a teacher, what your kids know and don't know, and getting them that feedback faster so that they understand that they're learning the material or not. And the faster, technology can give us feedback way faster. All three of these guys have 150 kids walk through their door every day. And to be efficient, as Andrew said at the very beginning, technology's your friend. And that's the way the kids get feedback, but also the teacher gets that feedback, too, so they can adjust their lessons. No bad tools, anyone? You don't hate anyone?
You talk a lot about things that people come with you, ask questions, and you try to respond. Do you have like planned initiatives for like what things you're trying to do practically for the rest of the year? Like, trying to work on this or trying to work on that? Or what's, what's coming up that you're trying to do that's not just helping with questions that they come up?
Well, I definitely am always delighted when we're given the opportunity to share with staffs in like a training setting, right before the pandemic hit. On that February 23rd or 28th of 2019, whenever it was, I gave a little presentation about formative assessment and some of the tools that I use, including Paradek. And it was just great. And to see some of my coworkers get excited about some of the stuff I was doing and asking more questions about how they can take those ideas or those tools and incorporate it to their lessons. I definitely think that would be obviously overwhelming in a, like it is this year because we're still very stressed out, I would say, a lot of us teachers. But if I was given the opportunity to present again about technology in the classroom, I would, I would love that opportunity.
Also think like a long-term initiative that we've been looking at is just being more purposeful in our assessments and in our, well, in our teaching in general. But, you know, attaching those learning objectives to an assessment. So, when a student doesn't master something or is, you know, needs to work on something at the end of the day, we're able to identify that in a more efficient way and then figure out pathways to get them where we want.
Yep. And I would say that in terms of kind of long-term initiatives, right now, we don't really have like a set program that we're advocating for everyone to use other than, you know, things like the school, our SchoolG page and Infinite Campus. And I've kind of taken it as, you know, Mary said it really well of, "We're all super, super busy this year." And so, the name of the game for me this year has been, "What can I give people that is, is, can have immediate value and impact?" And trying to find those little things in the programs that we are existing or that we have existing that we are using, trying to find those little things that are going to make a big difference in the amount of time it takes them to do something.
So, how much extra time on top of your job does this take? To go, you know, visit, add another hour, three hours teamwork day or week? Or how, how much, how involved is this?
It's hard to say. It ebb and flows. You know, some weeks you may go off very little. Other weeks, you might be more or less slammed with between questions or trying out a new program, or whatever it is. So, putting an hour on it is kind of tough. So, that's kind of my map with it. But once again, it's just sometimes it's a little bit more busy than others. And then, obviously, last year was kind of abnormal, or last year and the year before, for that matter, was slightly more abnormal. So, those were some more busy times. But I think a lot, staff learned a lot in those, those two years, those, that year and a half. So, it's almost like now, staff is slowly starting to, once again, problem solve without that side-by-side assistance. So, an hour, putting hours on it would be kind of difficult. But once again, it goes up and it goes down depending on what's happening at that point.
And I'd tell you, Katie, at the beginning, we did, we had a little tracking system. We had a Google Form set in, and we had some kind of like, "Who'd you help at what time?" And had them all log that. And we had it in the job description there of, "You had to help so many people per day or per week." Because we didn't know what, what kind of help we're talking about here. But I will, I'll tell you, whatever, we pay them a $1,000 stipend. It's not enough for what they do. And especially during the pandemic, these, these people were all lifesavers in every one of our buildings. Emergency, getting our staff up to speed very quickly and giving them the support they need all the time. Our Mondays last year were so important for that. And these people had their own lessons to get ready, but they spent the majority of their time helping others. So, that's why Dan's saying that ebbs and flows thing. It's probably less now because of all the work they did last year to get ready for that. But yeah, it's, I hope we can keep our capacity going with our staff, though.
I have a question. This is probably more for Clint. Where do you think Wasika Public Schools is? As far as using technology to educate our students? Are we about where we should be? Are we a little behind? Are we a little ahead? Are we a little all of that? Or how would you answer that?
Yeah, you know, that'd be a great question, Dave, to ask new teachers when they come in and get a feel when they come from another district. I'll tell you, I'm proud of our technology that we have, all from not only our hardware systems that we have, our smart panels that we have up, our Wi-Fi systems with that. But pretty much any tool that we need, we can get. And we can justify it either through our principal's budgets or through Elizabeth. It's, I, I think we're above, way above average with that. I think we're transitioning now with Brian and getting more quality Chromebooks. We're trying to do a five-year rotation on our technology there now, and that's harder to do with the older technology we had. But we have a big challenge in front of us with our laptops that our staff have, that you see in the room right now and next to you. We call them the bricks. Those are going to be obsolete here in the next couple of years, hopefully, if we get two years out of them. And then we got to figure out what our new staff devices are. But Dave, overall, I know everyone that's looking on the screen right now, does it look like our technology's great? But if you go throughout our district, it's pretty good.
I think what I see is, and what I've seen in the first year and a half here in this district is we're using technology, as Andrew mentioned, to enhance instruction and to become more efficient and to do a better job of supporting our students. And all three of them have mentioned that because it's not just a technology to do technology. We're past that. Now, it's about how is it going to improve our instruction and make our students and our experiences better? And so, from where I'm, my lens, which is, you know, in classrooms, obviously, at a different level, different in and out, in and out moving around, I see teachers using technology to support instruction, not just to say I use technology, which is where I want to be. I think we all want to be from that perspective, so.
It's really empowering. I give you guys a lot of credit because I've had to learn a lot more different systems with my schooling. And it's not easy when you're old school and you're forced into something new. So, it's nice having backup and people like you guys to go from these courses.
I just, I just want to say, I appreciate also everything that you guys are doing. I had my kids home for just two days while we waited for COVID tests, and it was awful. But, but the fact that they can keep up with their classes on Schoology as well as they could was so, was so helpful, I think. And that's, that's not, we weren't there two years ago. Like, you, you're homesick, you're homesick. So, it was, you had to wait till you went back to school to find out what you missed out on. So, I think that's huge. But that being said, what do you think for those kids that do, that do need to learn from home? What is something that's, that's still missing or that would make that learn-from-home experience a little bit better?
I'll let you guys go. I have thoughts, but I'll let you guys go.
I mean, I think it's still a big area of professional development for a majority of staff is how to, how to teach effectively in a blended environment, which is what we're doing, right? We are, we are teaching in the classroom all day, and then, and then we are trying to keep up for students that, that are in quarantine or that miss a day. And so, I think, I think just having the professional development of, you know, not using that technology for technology's sake, but having a purpose for it and making it a legitimate way that students can, can catch up and keep up with the class is always a, always a constant need for improvement there.
I think what, you know, I see across the board in the school is just having those procedures for students for if they miss, if they're going to be gone for a long time. So, they know that first day that they're at home, I know what I can do to stay on track. So, just kind of setting those out early on within the year and kind of do reminders as you go along is huge. And just the communication part, not only with the students, but also with the, with parents as well. So, they know, "How can I keep my, you know, my child on track if they're going to be gone for a week or two weeks or whatever it may be, or even just a day?" So, those kind of the big parts of it is just setting those procedures early on so students do know how to be successful, you know, if they're not in the classroom.
Great point. I like that point. I'd say one thing for me with my students is, when I post things online, I try to give them a lot of different options and some voice and choice into what they're doing there. So, if they want to submit this project in a different way, then they can obviously be flexible with the technology that way. Even if it just comes to reviewing vocabulary and things like that, too. I'll post a variety of different activities that they can do, my homework assignments. I let them make additional submissions if they wanted to try doing one of those again. Yeah, just giving them different options. It's not always easy setting up that material ahead of time. But whenever we have a quiz coming up or I know that a lot of students have been gone, I like to post a few different things for them to do, so you can do these activities or this or that, and you can choose what works best for you.
And Julie, just to keep going with it, is the technology is an equity thing. Once, once you give the child the technology, now we can be so much more, not only transparent of what we're doing in the classroom, you don't have to be in that room for that 48 minutes. And before in our traditional environment, if you weren't there, you missed out, and we're moving on. And now, they can catch up pretty quick or even be involved in the class. But at the same time with that, it's, I, I might have a disability. I might have a way of, I can't hear, and so, I need the subtext going across the bottom. I might be able to, or have a broken arm, and I can't type now. And so, now I can use voice to text on my Chromebook. I wanted to explain to Ms. Gilson of what I'm doing with my writing.
We lost, I know. Other questions? Thank you. We also respect their time, your people. Other questions? And the only thing, the only thing I think I would add on that last point, Julie, is I think where we live, where we're living right now is how are we helping support students to get through an absence? And that's different than, "This is our long-term solution," right? And I think it's a matter of deciding, I don't think any of us would advocate that a blended learning environment is where we'd love to be. Right now, we're surviving that that's where we're trying to get through and help support students. But if this becomes something that is just not going to go away, that becomes a different type of planning, right? Then, right now, we're trying to help support students for those absences that may be extended or destroyed versus this is the new normal. So, I think that's where we're at. So, well, thank you very much, Dan, Andrew, Mary, and then I'll text Clint later. We really appreciate you taking the time tonight, and you're doing great work for us and for our students and your colleagues, and that really is important to us. So, it's, I appreciate taking the time on a Thursday night to come and visit with us.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add something to what you said? I mean, I've never thought of this before. You know, traditionally, historically, whatever, if somebody is hurt or sick or has a legitimate reason, a family emergency, whatever, or missing school, it's kind of like, okay, learning stops. You're gone for three days. Learning starts. The way that I think you're kind of talking about is a different way of looking at it, that it never stops. How do you bridge that gap between, okay, I'm, you know, and it doesn't mean that they have to spend eight hours all three of those days going to school. But how do you, how do you bridge that gap between, okay, I'm missing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? My education doesn't stop when I leave school on Monday, and it starts again when I come back on Friday. It carries through.
Right, right. And it allows you to customize. Because if you're, if you're out because you're ill, then you're ill. And you can take a time off. But if you're out because, you know, you're going to an away event and you're going to miss your last two Thursday day, then you can get on your Schoology and do your thing. Or if you're out because you're in quarantine, but you feel fine, you can engage differently, so. Or as opposed to having missed three days, you may need to catch them up on Friday or later. At least you can go back and not have missed it.
Yeah. Well, and also, it's having everything accessible at home. Even if you did spend the whole day at school, you can also go home at night and review. Like, maybe you needed to look at that math concept over time, and hey, it's all right there or something. So, that's, it's not even just missing school. It's also just being able to have the tools built to review what you already learned, so.
And equate it to, then we don't belabor this too on. If you think about, like, if I'm going to be gone for a couple of days, I'm not necessarily engaging. Like, what if I was at, at work? But I'm just, I'm watching my emails. I'm checking voicemails. I'm just going to check in. So, that's going to keep me just at least up to speed enough. So, students have that option if they're, if they're on for like a vacation or a family something. And if they're sick, they're sick. But otherwise, it does, it just allows that option of connection to whatever's appropriate for that situation.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, Clint, that's.
Thanks, Clint.
I'm sorry, guys. It was a really profound thought, if you didn't get it.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time. We thank Andrew and Dan and Mary as well and the important work they're all doing. So, thanks for helping lead that.
Yep. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. All right. And so, moving on then to our second item for tonight, we are continuing with board professional development. And tonight, we're going to talk about some school finance options.
Yes. It is, it's a, it's a little bit of an intense, complicated topic, but Elizabeth has prepared some things for us. One of the things we were thinking about over the last week and a couple of months, actually, is, as we look at school finance, you know, there's lots of, for lack of a better word, buckets, our funds that are used for different things. And so, as we communicate with our community, with our school board, with our staff about, "What do we have funds available for, and what can we use certain funds for?" It's important to understand some of our restricted funds. We have unrestricted general funds, which is typically that we consider to be the, we use that for whatever we see the need of that time. But we have a lot of funds that are restricted and have specific purposes that can only be used for certain areas. And Elizabeth has prepared some slides for us tonight that she's going to take us through and talk through some of those restricted funds. So, as a board, as we go into, you know, this, the end of this calendar year and the beginning of next, and have some, some long-term decisions to make as a board, we kind of have a feel for where some of those, those funds and have some, some long-term decisions to make as a board, we kind of have a feel for where some of those, those funds land. Elizabeth, that's your, that's your key.
That's my key, sorry.
Yeah.
So I'm going to share my screen here in a moment. Can you tell this is my first time with Google Slides? I'm trying to figure out how to present and I know it's right here, so I apologize. Give me one moment. Probably right in front of me. There we go. All right. Preparing with me for a moment. As Eric had mentioned, we are going to do a little deeper dive into some of the other funds and categories that we don't necessarily talk about that often. And so we're going to talk a little bit more about what are, what are the true components of a Waseca Public School District budget? This will mimic many other budgets within Minnesota and we're going to tailor it specific to Waseca. So for example, for Waseca, we have, our budget is broken up into different funds. And for us, that is eight for the 21, 22 school year. And from the fund, then it gets further broken down into what we call balance sheet accounts. And the ones that we're going to hit on are our non-spendable budget, balance sheet accounts. And that's truly what it is. It's in a non-spendable form and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And that relates really more to Fund One and Fund Two. We're going to talk about assigned balance sheet accounts. And what that means is we as the district have said, we have a specific purpose that we want to use these resources for. So we as the district are willing to set them aside for a specific purpose. When we talk about restricted funds, that means an external entity has stated that there is a specific purpose, a specific use for funds, and that's governed by an outside entity. And again, all districts are also subject to restricted funds. And then we're going to touch very briefly on unassigned because that's what we talk about the most. That's where we can spend our resources to meet any current or future need. And that's what gives us the most flexibility. And so that's why we spend the most time talking about it. And so what we're going to do is we're going to put that on the back burner a little bit tonight and talk a little bit more about these other components of our, our, our funds, excuse me. I'm also going to say with this, after we get through with this, this really is meant to just give you a very high level overview look at what our, our budget is, is made up of. I will share these slides with you after we're done as well. And that'll give you an opportunity to read through a little bit more of them. As you'll see later, I've got links in there as well. I'm not going to go into all of the links, but I'm just trying to give you resources to give you a better understanding or comprehension of what goes into school finance. So we're first going to talk about the funds. And for the 21, 22 school year, our, our revenue budget is just shy of $30 million. And so we're going to go through what, what makes up that $30 million. So we're going to actually start backwards. So we're going to start with our Fund 20, which is our Internal Service Fund. And that's where we have our dental reimbursement program. We don't have an outside agency handling our dental program or it's basically a dental insurance program, but it's a reimbursement program that we hold ourselves. So basically we're self-insured. This represents 0.7% of our district budget. And it's all funded based on premiums, whether it's employer contribution or employee contribution. So that's a local source. There was no other outside funding source for this fund. The next one that we're going to talk about is our custodial fund. And this is where our Waseca County Collaborative monies flow through as well as slips as a pass-through. And that's exactly what a custodial fund is, is a pass-through. We, we may be the fiscal host for something, but we don't necessarily, I'm going to say Waseca Public Schools doesn't have say on how these funds are spent and/or the revenue coming in. So for example, the, the Waseca County Collaborative, this is a joint effort between our county and between New Richland Schools, JWP Schools and Waseca Schools. So there is a committee that helps determine where these funds go. It's just we're the fiscal host for them. So we're just a pass-through. Same thing with scholarships. A, a prime example would be the scholarships that are awarded through Waseca Area Foundation. The funds come to us and then we, we push them out depending upon where they've been awarded to. Again, we're just a pass-through for them. And this represents 0.9% of our entire district budget. Again, a very, a local source because those are just from outside entities. It's not state-funded or federally funded. Fund Aid is our trust fund. And so this is also another scholarship account. But really what this means is scholarships, individuals have entrusted the school district with their monies and we invest and pay out the interest that is earned on the principal for, for the scholarships that they've entrusted to us. So we actually do hold these funds and we do our best to try to invest them on an annual basis. Unfortunately, right now, you'll see that right now it's 0% of our district budget on the revenue side. What that means is unfortunately the interest rates are so low right now. We're just not earning a great return on the principal that they've invested with us. On a normal year, we're able to allocate between $5,000 and $10,000 in scholarships. That's been, that's been generated by interest. It's just unfortunately the interest rates are not there this year. Debt service fund, Fund Seven. This is basically just paying the principal and interest on any of our bonded debts. As we go to our community and ask for specific projects, this is where all of those resources will flow. The, the taxpayer dollars will come in, will account them for in Fund Seven. And then all of the principal and interest will also be paid out of Fund Seven. This represents 10.3% of our district budget. And as you can see, I'm going to start putting, if, if it's coming from a, a source other than local, you'll start seeing the aid and levy split on that. And so just shy of 87% is levy and then just shy of 14% is state aid. So there is some equalization there that comes from the state when we do sell bonds. I'm going to take a quick pause as we've gone through one column. Any questions with what you've seen so far? I'm going to keep going if that's all right then. Fund Six is our building construction fund. We don't always have this fund. We have a little bit of proceeds remaining from our bond sales since 2015. We have a little bit of money left over from a project when we had sold our health and safety bonds. So really this does represent a major capital project. And really when we say major, that's a $2 million or more project. And that's where these funds will sit until the proceeds are gone. Right now we're talking about revenue, but there is about a $300,000 fund balance left in Fund Six. Like I said, because of health and safety bonds that we had sold prior. And for fiscal year 22, we will be depleting those funds, finishing off an indoor air quality project throughout the district. So that will be at 0% on the expenditure side as well after this year. Fund Four is our Community Education, our Community Service Fund. And there's five components in the Community Service Fund and we'll talk a little bit more about those in the next couple of slides. This is 4.2% of our district budget. And as you can see, this is very heavily driven by its, its fee-based programming is really what it is. You can see 63% is local sources. Again, those fee-based. 23% does come from levy and 14% does come from aid. The next one that we're going to talk about is our Food Service Fund. And this represents our full year program. So it represents the, the program that we do during our school year. And then we offer a fantastic summer program as well. So it's really a, a seamless program throughout the year. This represents 2.6% of our district budget. This year, because everyone is free and reduced, you're going to see about 83% of the sources coming from federal revenue and 17% coming from local sources. So again, there still are sales that are happening or the catering that we do with Team Academy Charter School or Grace Gardens. So that's where that local source is coming in. On a normal year, you're going to see a split between state aid, federal aid, as well as local sources and local sales is really what that means. With Fund Two, just something to point out, there are minimum balance requirements and there's maximum balance requirements. So you need to make sure this cannot go into the deficit. You have to have a, a positive fund balance or a zero or positive fund balance in your food service account. But you can't carry more than three months' worth of expenditure in your fund balance either. They want to make sure that you're not building this and not reinvesting back into the program. Fund One, this is where we spend most of our time for our discussion. So this is the catch-all. It's all the activities not accounted for elsewhere. And of course, this does represent our largest part of our budget, over 80% of our budget is, is in the general fund. And you can see the makeup here, 10% is levy, 77% is state aid, just shy of 8% is federal. And then the remaining is going to be local sources. So those would be like our gate receipts, our participation fees. That's what that local source means. Any questions with Fund? And like I said, we're going to keep going down in, in more detail. But right now we kind of started at the big umbrella.
Would Fund Oh Six be where the high school construction project all came into and went out of a number of years ago?
Absolutely. So that dollar amount alone was about $30 million at one point when we had all of our bond proceeds come in. So our bit, our, our budget was basically double this when we had that project in play. Any other questions with Fund? All right. So now we're going to move on. And like I said, we're going to start drilling down into what, what are the balance sheet accounts? So what makes up each of those fund components? We talked a little bit about non-spendable. And as I said before, it's, it's means that we have assets or a fund balance that's just not spendable. What that means for us is we have inventory on hand or we've prepaid for items for the next school year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about inventory. In Fund One, it's, it's a small portion, but it does make up our fund balance. So just shy of 3% represents the non-spent, non-spendable fund balance in Fund One. We do have inventory on hand. So for example, copy paper, we do a mass order and make sure that we have copy paper on hand. We, we buy probably 5,000 cases of paper and then we just keep that on hand. So that's non-spendable, but it's an asset that we have that we've used our resources on. Other resources might be custodian inventory. There's certain things that we want to have on hand that we don't run out of and have an ample supply of. So custodian inventory is another example. Prepaid would be, so say we are in May and June of a business year, but we have a bill due for our insurance premiums for the following year. Or we have some software that's going to expire June 30th. What we do is we prepay for them, but it's really an expenditure that belongs in the following year. So we're accounting for it, but the expenditure doesn't get accounted for until the following year. So that's what a prepaid is called, is, is when we have an obligation that is due before the actual fiscal year that it belongs to. In Fund Two, this will represent a bigger amount of their fund balance. It represents 21% of their, their fund balance and that is their food service inventory. So again, it's not like they're just ordering one day, get inventory one day and then, you know, expend it the next day. They have an ample supply of inventory on hand at all three instances. So that's something that we watch and Food Service does a really nice job of obviously not making sure they have too much inventory on hand, but enough to be able to sustain them and, and fulfill their meal plans for the month. The next that we're going to talk about is, and again, this is, we as a district are saying, we've got some, some specific purpose that we would like to set aside some of our resources for. And so I, I just listed some of the projects and/or programs that we've said, we as a district are going to assign them because we want to make sure that we're either maintaining a fund balance or we're setting a certain limit that we're only going to spend this much and then spend it down. So for example, our Passages Program, it used to be Waseca County Off Campus and Transition to Passages. That's an assigned fund for us. New for this year is the 18 to 21 Transition Program. Donations are an assigned one for us, again, because they're for a specific purpose. We want to make sure that we're, we're holding true to what a donor has asked us to spend the fund on. And this, and then the other one is the Junior High School Facility Project. And, and we've talked about that briefly over the past couple of years. That was originally set aside when we sold our bonds because we had to do some budget reduction based upon what we sold our bonds for, what our project costs were coming in. And like I said, made some budget reductions, but set aside some funds to make sure that we were making the right decisions. Going to keep talking along if that's okay? So we're going to talk a little bit more about Fund Four, which is our Community Education, our Community Service Fund. And as I said before, there are five components of this fund. And as you can see, this is something I also want to point out. So in, in, in talking about restricted funds or even just funds in general, a lot of this is driven by state statute on what you can and cannot use these resources for. So as you're going to see on the next couple of slides, I've linked in all of the different statutes that are associated with each of these accounts. Again, I'm not going to open them all, but I'll link them to you as resources if you'd like to look at them later. So just kind of as a, as a reminder, I know we know this, but school finance is highly regulated and these are the statutes that drive that. Community Education. The Community Education Reserved Fund Balance is really, the first one is that focus on enrichment programs for any age level, not part of the K-12 education program. So prime examples of this would be our dance classes, school age care, the, the summer rec program, the rec program during the school year. That's where that community education. The next one is Early Childhood Family Education, or ECFE. And this focuses into improved parenting skills of new and expectant parents. This is a smaller portion, just shy of 7%. Full readiness, when you're age three to kindergarten, or again, kindergarten preparation is, is what this is also referred to as. That's 16% of their budget. Adult Basic Education, you don't see it on the graph because we've transitioned over the past couple of years. We actually collaborate with La Sura Henderson and they are the hosts for our Adult Basic Ed Program. So we still have the program. It's just in collaboration with La Sura Henderson and they are the fiscal host for the program. So, but I did want to make mention, we still have it. It's just we don't house the, the funds for that program. And then the last one is the Community Education Restricted Funds. These are kind of a catch-all. Why they are in community education, that's just the way that it, it had decided. So for example, preschool screening runs through there and non-public pupil aids and programs. Again, we are a fiscal host for Sacred Heart and for our homeschool families. They are eligible for state aid for certain categories, both health services as well as textbooks. And the Community Education Fund is the, the house for where those funds live. Any questions with Community Education?
I think you keep going.
Do it okay? Is that what you said, Eric?
Yes. Yep.
Perfect. All right. So now we're going to talk, we're going to drill into the balance sheet accounts or the restricted accounts in Fund One or our general fund. So if you can visualize the, the budget when we bring it to you, there's a whole top section really is restricted funds and we don't talk a lot about them. So that's what really the goal is today is to, to help inform you of all of the different funds that we have available to us, but the specific purpose that they, they play within each of the school districts. First one is student activities. These are extracurricular funds that are raised by students and they're really driven by students. So this fluctuates each year. Prime examples of this would be like your FFA or our choir or band, especially when they're going on trip years. These are where all of those funds flow. And again, they're restricted to that specific account or activity that is raising the, the funds, again, for that specific purpose. The next one is staff development. And, and I don't, we don't talk about a lot about this one. It's actually 2% of our basic gen ed formula. So the, the general education allocation that we get per pupil unit, $135 of that has to be set aside for staff development. It's a great tool for us to be able to provide TOSA for our school district. It's a mentorship program for our school district. We divide it by district as well as per site. So each site has a little bit more flexibility on how they want to use those funds. We have a district PG and D committee, sorry, Professional Growth and Development Committee. And then each site has their own PG and D committee as well. So a couple of different layers on how staff development is used. The next one is operating capital and really this is for equipment and facilities. You can see here, there, there's an aid and levy split on this one. 74% comes from state aid and 26% comes from levy. It's based on a per pupil unit as well as the age of our building. So the older your buildings, the higher allocation you're going to get. For us, that's about $350,000 per year. For us, that's about $350,000 per year on an annual basis. And this is also driven by our five-year capital outlet plan. So whether you're on the finance committee or the facility committee, or even just you in the board in general, we're regularly bringing this plan to you, trying to figure out how can we allocate the resources available to us to either enhance the equipment that we have, invest in new equipment, invest in our facilities. And so one other thing I put on here was capital facility bonds. So another financial tool that we have available to us is called capital facility bonds. We use this almost 10 years ago to help replace the roof over at the WIS building. And basically what we are doing is we're borrowing against ourselves. So we borrowed about $1 million from ourselves, and it was a 10-year payback, but it comes off the top of our capital outlay or operating capital annual basis. So we receive about $350,000 per year. Paying for our facility bond, we'll get about $450,000 per year because we've been paying for that bond every single year on an annual basis. So that is a financial tool that we do have available to us when we know we have a bigger project that we need to raise funds for. The max that you can take out per year is obviously your allocation for that year. So I mean, we could go for a capital facility bond that had a payment of $450,000 per year, but then we wouldn't be able to do any other project that we have on that five-year capital outlet plan. Any questions with that one at all?
So you said, right now we get about $350,000 a year, but once we're done paying back that bond, it's really $450,000?
Correct, because we're making about $100,000 payment to pay off that capital facility bond for the roof replacement.
And obviously you have that built into your five-year plan.
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. The next one that we're going to talk about is learning and development. This is really specific to our K6 population, and this is revenue that, the purpose is to help reduce our pupil to staff ratios. And again, this is a set aside out of our basic formula. So again, when we get that annual allocation from $299 per pupil unit up to $459, it depends on the grade level they're in, comes off of that formula allowance because we have to set it aside for learning and development. So that is funds that we invest back into our K6 programming to help us try to keep those staff to student ratios lower. The next one we're going to talk about is our Area Learning Center. So this is a state-approved program, and this is our, we have a middle-level program and our 912 program. And since we have that programming, we're able to have targeted services programming, which is outside of the school day. So whether it's after the school day, during our regular school year, or summer programming, we're able to do that because of our Area Learning Center. And then we also collaborate with surrounding districts. Since they don't have an Area Learning Center, they use our Area Learning Center to be able to either send kiddos to us for the ALC and/or it allows them the opportunity to have a targeted services program of their own. So we collaborate with WEM, NRHEG, JWP, and Team Academy in this regard as well. Gifted and Talented, this is funded at $13 per pupil unit for us. And this is just to basically give enhanced opportunities to our students, and it's across the district. But I'll give you a prime example of what we use gifted and talented dollars for. Junior high, senior high level is our PSEO classes. It helps offset that cost for PSEO or college in the school. So when we're getting those bills, gifted and talented funds help us offset that cost. Teacher development and evaluation, this was some revenue that we received a couple of years ago. There's no new revenue that's coming in for this, but it does help us just with our teacher development and evaluation program. So whether we're working on mentors, again, maybe a specific area that we want to help, you know, our teachers to be efficient as possible, this is where those funds would lie. This is kind of a prime example where we have a fund balance there, and we can't shift it anywhere else. It has to be on the specific purpose. So every year that we don't spend it, it just will roll over to the next year until we complete that fund. Basic skills and compensatory education, we talked quite a bit about this. This is really driven by our free and reduced count. And unfortunately, this fund balance has been slightly declining over the past couple of years. Again, a great thing that we have free meals available to all students, but the hiccup with that is not everybody is filling out those free and reduced forms, which helps generate this revenue for us. And we use it in two different ways. The first way that we use it is for our EL population. So it will help fund our teachers for English language learners at all sites. So we have a site, a teacher at each site, as well as paraprofessionals to help support those individuals who are identified as EL. The other way that we use these are a couple of different ways that we use this across the district. We use it for remedial instruction. We use it for individualized instruction. We can use that to help reduce class sizes. And we also use it for guidance services. So this is a really key component of our budget and helps address a lot of great programming. We just have not seen the revenue, unfortunately, these past couple of years because our free and reduced counts are not where they were prior to the pandemic. All right, finishing up here with restricted in Fund One, last couple of slides here. Safe schools, you can see it's really, it's levy-based is really what it is. So we get $36 per pupil units to help us fund safe schools. And what this means is really it helps fund our police liaise on services. Or any, if we had facility security enhancements, we could do cameras, but a majority of the funding really goes to our police liaise on officer, as well as that collaboration that we have with the city. Long-term facility maintenance, we do spend a lot of time in this area, but just want to bring it to your attention again that this is a restricted fund for us. And really what LTFM is, the purpose is to prevent further erosion of our facility. So there's two components, the LTFM, which we just talked about, as well as the health and safety. And when we talk about health and safety, that's more in the areas of like fire marshals, asbestos abatement, indoor air quality, physical hazards. Those are the kinds of things that surround health and safety. And we have a 10-year plan that we bring to the school board every single year, and we get that approved by the Department of Education as well. There are opportunities with LTFM, just like there are with capital outlay or operating capital, is that you can do a capital facility bond out of these funds as well. And again, it's basically borrowing against yourself for a specific project that you might not have that annual cash flow to cover. So that is another funding tool that we have used. And we've done that for the indoor air quality as well as asbestos abatement is two areas that we've used our capital facility bond for. And the last thing that we're going to wrap up with for restricted fund is medical assistance. We're able to bill, pretty billing for some of our students who are eligible. And this just helps with our special ed costs in general. So it does benefit those students. They need specific interventions. If we need specific assistance, if we need specific tools, a standard, anything like that, medical assistance helps fund those. And then it also helps us in general as a district with our cross subsidy. And what that means is special education is not 100% funded. And so the districts usually end up picking up, we're going to say probably 40%, 40 to 50%, depending upon where we're at, of the cost, we have to pull that out of our unassigned fund balance to help with the total cost of special education. Medical assistance, any revenue that's generated for that can help offset maybe that 50 to 40% that's not funded by the state formula. So I have a graph just on the, to give you just another visual of what makes up our general fund revenue budget, whether it's restricted, assigned, or unassigned. And the last piece that we're going to talk about, before I completely overwhelmed you, is we're going to talk just briefly about the unassigned, just as a reminder. Again, this is where we have the most flexibility to cover or meet any of our current or future needs. And so we do have a fund balance policy, it's 714. And that helps guide, you know, how we budget moving forward. We, right now, for, at the end of the 21-22 school year, our fund balance is projected to be at 26.56%. And our fund balance policy says between 15 and 35%. So we're right within that range. You can see on the graph on the right-hand side of just what our trend has been, whether it's, we measure it in days or percentage. And then the red line is our fund balance policy, just showing where we're at percentage-wise with that fund balance policy. The last thing I wanted to touch on briefly is just the state aid. And we've talked a little bit about this and just want to put it, maybe make it, put it more in perspective for you. So we did get a 2.4% increase on the state aid formula, which is great. Always wonderful that we're getting increases. But if we take the same amount of students we had in fiscal '21, enroll them to fiscal year '22, what that means for Wasika Public Schools is an increase of revenue of just over $309,000. So just in our, you know, short of $30 million budget, it would be a $309,000 increase for us for Wasika Public Schools. And I apologize, I know I ran through that really fast, but I think again, we just really wanted to give you that high overview look at all of the different components that we have access to. They are restricted accounts, very useful, but there's not a lot of leeway on where we can spend those funds. It has to be, it is determined by state statute, and that's really what drives our decisions on what we do moving forward.
Yeah, thanks, Elizabeth. The only thing I would add, you did a great job of that before we ask, see if anybody has any questions. You know, part of the purpose of this is as we start thinking about what the next year of decisions lie in for the board, it's important to know what the narrative looks like for how much of that $29, $30 million is really accessible for various projects. For its capital facilities bond, and all facility bond, whatever the options we have at LTFM, all of those things that go into part of the process. So it's not, it's not the same as balancing a checkbook. And everything goes in and then you send out, send it out for whatever expense you choose. We have statutory limitations on what we can use certain monies for. And so as a board, it's really just important to understand that as we go into whatever decisions we make in the next year. So you feel comfortable doing so. So thank you for that time. I know you will have time for a few questions. Also, though, you will have access to this sheet to go into more detail because that was a lot and some, a lot of links you could click on and read some of those statutes if you choose. Elizabeth and/or I are always willing to sit down with any of you and talk through these things in more detail, too.
All right, I have a question. And maybe for the audience here, if you could explain the ESR money. Can you explain exactly what that is, why it is, and where does that fit into all of this?
Right. And you were asking, you said ESR money, correct? Is that?
Correct.
Yep. So it is federal funding that is coming our way. And there, it's an application process, so we have to be accountable for all of the funds that are coming to us. And there are certain guidelines on what they would like us to use them for, and it has to be expenditure-based. So I think the one thing that I want to first share with everyone is that it's not a revenue replacement. It's not, we're going to give you $500,000 and move on. You know, you can just build it into your budget. Unfortunately, we have to have expenditures that follow the revenue that's coming. So we expend first, and then we ask for reimbursement afterwards. So like I said, it's not a revenue replacement for, for example, like our declining enrollment. It's not a replacement for that revenue that we lost in the state aid that we're not getting for those students that didn't enter into our buildings. We have a certain amount of years to be able to use all of the different federal funding. Of course, it could be pandemic-related. So whether we're looking at equipment to help with our cleaning procedures, just cleaning product in general, that's an item to be looking at. How can we meet students individually? So whether it's software programs, it's devices, that's another area that we can be using our ESR funds. But right now, we are really dedicating a majority of our ESR funds by keeping our staffing in this. So we try to keep those class sizes lower and try to right-size our district over the next couple of years.
Yeah, part of the, so the federal money is really intended to support for pandemic-related expenses that were incurred. And part of that is enrollment is an issue. And so for all districts, you know, across the state. And so that's part of how we're supporting ourselves by keeping our staffing level where they are, which spacing kids out, keeping kids, you know, in as small a section as possible, is where we're tending to spend that money for the most part. So which is why, and so in terms of what she just presented as far as budget, this money is on top of that. And the money to Wasika Public Schools is, all in all, a little over $2 million that would have to come from somewhere else had that not been allocated to us. And so we're grateful for it. It's very fortunate, but it's not really a just use it for whatever is appropriate type of piece. So is that helpful?
Yeah.
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 Can I ask a question for the staff salaries? Are they coming from the general funds? And what is the percentage?
Staff, and correct me here, or help me out, about 70% usually of our budget is salary.
Correct. And that's really where in that unassigned fund balance is where the operations would happen.
But it would also be like, Clinton and his team was staff development. So could that have been the staff development restricted fund, or is that not really true?
Some of their activities are, so if they go to a conference or a learning opportunity for them, it will run through staff development. The mentors that we have will run through staff development. Their stipends are outside of that.
So yes and, kind of, kind of, depends on the activity.
Yep.
Well, it would seem like as things are decided, well, we have an expense we want to do, it would seem advantageous if we, if we can have a restricted fund that we can utilize that for. And we can then utilize those things that maybe have less flexibility, which gives us more fund available and be unrestricted for our choices and flexibility.
Absolutely. What we're finding is, and notwithstanding of the ESR money, the other current restricted funds, there's not a lot of flexibility for creativity. And Eric's pretty called out in those statutes, which you can use it for. So, but yeah, every time we have the opportunity to utilize those things, we will, they're part of our budget.
Any other questions? I appreciated that. I forgot certain things about, like I forgot that Adult Basic Education wasn't really, I forgot that collaboration or whatever. So it's good to have the oversight or overview of everything. I really appreciate that. So, thank you, Elizabeth.
You're very welcome.
And that basically concludes our workshop for tonight. Those are the two topics we had on the agenda for tonight. And unless there's other things that the board wanted to bring up from last minutes. Anytime, this is just a, I guess, a for the board, but Eric and I meet before, about a week before all of our agendas. And if there's something that you want to see on a future workshop, particularly for like our staff spotlight, if you want to, if there's a certain group of staff that you would love to see come in. And like, tonight was awesome. It was cool to hear from our tick group, or at least some of them. And there's other groups that would be fun to hear from as well. So if there's anyone that you would like to get us on the schedule, we could certainly do that. And then if there's anything along the facility or finance or professional, period, I'm concerned.
We did actively talk to Samantha Pipple, and talked to her a little bit about the trip down to the education convention in Indianapolis. And she told me about it in the DM of our conversation. I just suggested to her, I said, you know, you might want to come and speak to the whole board and a couple of students along, and she's been open to that and kind of excited about that. So she might be contacting, I think she said she was going to maybe contact. And I told her about the first meeting of the month, the workshop, the third, excuse me, the third Thursday of the business meeting. But I said, you know, if you could get on the agenda or whatever, just to talk to Eric or Taylor.
We've done that in the past in like our informational part of our regular meetings, so that's, either way, we're.
Just, I'm going to steal a little bit of her thunder, but I can't remember the student's name. It was a young lady. She had some type of projects she presented at, and of course, this is a national convention. And she did a place in the whole country.
Thanks.
And she did plays in the whole country for a particular project. Again, I don't know exactly, so something we may be very, very proud of.
Okay, well, yeah, so our next regular meeting is November 18th, so two weeks from now. And then our next work session will be December 2nd. We are finished for the evening, so thank you all.